I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Got all your reports in the sheriff file. Go ahead and consider a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And Sean, do you want to handle those bid items? Or, excuse me, backup? Opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission this morning? Nobody? A lot of people here for nobody. All right. If not, we'll move forward. Commissioner reports for information purposes only. Anybody like to say anything? All right. Hearing none. Sean, will you go ahead and move forward with items one, two, and three on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So for the sealed bids for surplus county vehicle, the 2015 Dodge Charger, we had four bids submitted by 10:00 a.m. the 12th. The first one was Kenneth and Denise O'Brien for $2,731. The second was from Nate and Laurel Laubach for $1,800. The third from Yusuf DeBog for $1,268. And the fourth was from Lisa Hemmingson for $1,205. So the highest bid on the 2015 Dodge Charger was from Kenneth and Denise O'Brien for $2,731.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you.
Is this a motion to accept the highest bid?
Correct.
Okay.
The 2,731. Right? It's 2,731?
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
The next one is for the about 12 acres of alfalfa land, the lease by the 4-H grounds. We received one bid. It was a three-year contract, and then the bid amount was for $102 each year for the three years from Andrew and Jason Hahn.
Is that total, right, for all the acres?
Yes.
And entertain a motion?
That seems cheap, doesn't it?
I'd say so.
Yeah.
It does seem cheap.
I don't think, you know, 100 bucks for all those acres, and that's fresh alfalfa they just planted.
Let me double-check the bid form contract to make sure.
Does that mean our building superintendent would be haying the alfalfa?
No. It does not.
We have an awful lot of these farmland leases right now.
Did they submit a check with it, Sean?
This agreement, it is due May 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it would be a per year.
Total. I would move to reject and re-advertise.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
That was Poppins and Aaron's?
Yes.
It was.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So the third one is for the airport hay lease. This is very similar agreement. Approximately 50 acres. And this was also only one bid from Andrew and Jason Hahn for $50.02.
Is that per acre? No.
One?
Believe it's per year. Yeah. Given that, I will move to reject and re-advertise.
Second.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Hasn't that rented before?
Considerably higher, yes.
Yes, considerably more.
Harold. Yep.
Morning, everyone. Before you have a application for permit to shoot fireworks on April 24th at 9:00 p.m. by Mr. Mark Foster from Lincoln Lakes. This, I spoke with Mr. Foster yesterday. He does this every year. And I told him I would advise the commission to approve this pending that we have no high fire danger or red flag warning at that particular time. He also has to speak with the fire chief in Harrisburg, Cody Lenkeek, and possibly have them out there watching it when he does this if they agree to do so. So if you have any questions on this, I will answer them. I drove up there yesterday and looked at the area. On two sides of it is harvested bean field from last year and shouldn't be an issue with anything unless we have a strong south wind. That may, as the map keeps coming up here, you see the chute site way to the bottom. And everything on the south and the west is bean field. There is a little concern in the dark and black area that there's some tall fields there that are from last year. And I told him if we have a south wind, he may have to not do this, and he's agreed to these terms, so. If you have more questions, I'll answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask the commission to approve it pending there be no high fire danger or red flag warning at that time.
Harold, do you check with, do you check with them that day to see what their plan is before people go out there?
He will let me know, and so will the fire chief from Harrisburg, so.
Okay.
I would move to approve with those restrictions.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you, Harold.
May I correct a statement I made? I may have misled you.
Sure.
I found the agreement. I was looking at the wrong one. That was a per acre bid for the airport, for the airport and the alfalfa ground, so my apologies for that error.
I would rescind both motions so we can discuss it if we would like, if there is a dis-
Were both motions yours?
Yes.
And then who seconded those?
I'll second it.
Second rescinding both motions?
Yes.
Okay. Sean, you want to call the roll on that, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. So then on item two on the alfalfa ground, it's 102 cents per acre for those 12 acres per year, correct?
I would so move to accept that bid.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Sean, could you clarify for me? Did we estimate or do we say exact? I'm a little surprised we did it on a per acre basis because we don't verify the acres.
Estimate what? The number of acres?
Number of acres.
I believe it is estimate.
Just estimate and accept based on that. All right. Thank you.
All right. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And then item number three that we rescinded the rejection, do I have a motion?
So I would accept, or I'll second.
And that's a motion to approve $50.02 per acre for the approximately 50 acres?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification, Sean.
My apologies for the error.
Harold, what do you got?
One more thing. I have a signature sheet that's required every quarter that I get turned in to the state saying that I have met the requirements set forth by the LMPG agreement, which pays half of my salary and administrative expenses. The commission chairperson's signature agrees to that. I have to sign it saying I have done that. The auditor has to sign that saying that anything that has been expended is true and accurate and that we have the information on file to prove that. It's a simple quarterly thing. And interestingly enough, my regional coordinator called me yesterday and was going through my report. Said you've got it all done, and it looks good except for this signature sheet, which we have until the end of the month to get done, but it's nice to get it done early, so. If you would agree to sign that, then I can get that sent off later today, too.
Thank you, Harold. Is there a motion to approve the execution of the performance grant?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Sean has the form to be signed, yeah. I can get it later when you're, when you're done.
All right. Thanks, Harold.
Yes.
And then we have item six. Toby, you want to tee that up? And you're going to sit back there, I'm understanding?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
This is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as tract 1P Burgers Edition Northwest Quarter, Section 34, T 100 North, R 49W from the A-1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval 5-0 with one abstention. Good morning. Toby Brown with County Planning. As stated, this is an application from David Nagelhout to rezone the subject property from the A-1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District. No concept plan was submitted with the application. However, in staff discussions with the applicant, the intention is to replat a portion of this property. You can't see it real well on this, but there's a tree line there. To add that to the property directly adjacent to the east, that's also owned by Mr. Nagelhout. The remaining property would be utilized for one single-family dwelling. As you can see, the county has rezoned adjacent parcels to rural residential. This is the first reading of this application. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for your next meeting on April 27th. With that, we have to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, Toby, you go ahead.
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as the north 733 feet, south 1,499.69 feet, west 730 feet, except part of H2 in the northwest quarter of Section 33, Township 100 North, R 51 West, from the A-1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval 5-0 with one abstention. This subject property is owned by an applicant as Dick Peters. Mr. Peters also owns the property directly to the north and directly to the south. The north and south parcels were recently rezoned within the last few years to facilitate residential development. Mr. Peters also owns this property directly to the north. It's owned commercial. Mr. Peters did submit a concept plan with his application. The intention is to do a 12-lot rural residential subdivision. As you can see, this would be the property line for this subject property here. So he's proposing to keep the house that he currently resides in to the north of this, utilize a portion of it where the sheds are to develop with the south portion of the property that was recently resolved. This will assist the county with access onto the county road as well. And so the planning commission again did recommend approval of this. This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing will be at your next meeting on April 27th. With that, we have to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, we'll move on to item eight. Sean?
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning a portion, approximately 20 acres, proposed tract one, of the property legally described as a north half, northeast quarter, except H1 of Section 18, T 98, N R 50W, from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the I-2 General Industrial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval 3 to 2 with one abstention. This is an application from Paul Garbers. He is the owner of this subject parcel. He is proposing to rezone a portion of this parcel, approximately 20 acres, again from the I-1 Light Industrial to the I-2 General Industrial. The applicant is proposing then to sell the property to another party, so no concept plan was submitted with the application. I have met with the other party. The other party is proposing to, since this would be a conditional use, would be proposing to build a slaughtering facility. I know that sounds like an archaic term, but that's essentially what the conditional use would be in the I-2 Industrial District. In discussions with the applicant, he really referenced it as, as a food locker or a locker that's really more enhanced food locker. Since the planning commission meeting, I have had the applicant submit essentially a plat. What was originally submitted was just kind of a drawing of what the potential area would look like. But this is actually what would the portion that would be rezoned. The previous submittal showed that it would go maybe down here a little bit, but this will be the 20 acres proposed. And there's a little bit of right-of-way there as well, so it's approximately 21 acres. So at this time, what's before you will be the rezone application. Again, a rezone allows any potential uses that exist in the I-2 District. But again, as proposed from a secondary party, it would be for a slaughtering facility. I did meet with the city commission from Worthing last week. I did share with them. They had a, their primary concern was is that they weren't notified by the county of this application. I made them aware that this property is not within their platting jurisdiction or their growth area. So our standard practice in our office is we typically don't, we don't notify or work with the municipalities. But since then, again, as I mentioned, I did meet with the city commission last week. Some of the concerns of the citizens that were present were the same that were shared at the planning commission meeting. And that's concerns with the road conditions, the additional truck traffic on the roads. There was also concern with the potential that wastewater would be treated with lagoon system and the potential effects or smells associated with that, as well as some concerns about the operational number of employees that would be at the facility. I, as I'll tell them, as I'll tell you, is that those will all be addressed at the second phase of this with the conditional use permit. But it's important that you, as the board, consider that what's before you is a petition to rezone properties, so not necessarily a concept. It could be any of those potential uses that are proposed within that. But with that, this is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing will at your next meeting, which will be on April 27th. With that, we have to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, we'll move on to item nine. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you. As you realize, in January, on January 5th, Commissioner Poppins and I volunteered and were appointed to represent this commission on the Marvin Ski Airport. And in January, also, I believe Commissioner Aaron's brought to our attention some of the additional hangar needs that might be something that we want to look at at the Marvin Ski Airport. And from there, we progressed on, and Commissioner Poppins and I met on February 11th. And we kind of talked about maybe we should create a committee to look at the total operations of the T and Marvin Ski Airport. And perhaps we need some representation of different groups. And with that, for me to kind of catch up to what has happened there in the past and what is possibly could happen in the future and what's happening there now, I did meet with our engineers, Helms and Associates, on March 11th, and I found that to be very interesting and very helpful. And so I guess with that in mind, I'm proposing today, on April 13th, the creation of a board to look at some of the needs that maybe we need to address. Again, I was looking at the formation of a seven-to-nine member committee, and it would include Commissioner Poppins and myself, perhaps a T airport representative, someone representing the business flyers, somebody representing recreational flyers, obviously a representative from the city of T, surrounding landowners, someone from Lincoln County Economic Development. And I guess I'm open to anyone that this commission feels also should perhaps be included in looking at the overall operations of the airport. And so with that, I present this to the, to the commission. And I guess Commissioner Poppins, is there anything that you would like to add or that I forgot?
No, I think you've covered it. It's just a matter of are we ready to make this step with that airport? We're working with Helms to come up with a, I guess, a master plan. Do you want it to be county-driven? The taxpayers of the county have, you know, fronted the funds. We're in the process of trying to acquire those funds back, which we have, I think, good word that we will receive that with the additional 20 acres. We've had, you know, this is ongoing. We've often said that we're not the experts in running an airport, but we have that responsibility. So that being said, what is the guidance from the whole commission as to where to proceed at this time?
Well, I recall a couple of months ago, I had some discussions with Commissioner Schmidt about this. Seemed to be generally supportive of essentially restart, I don't know if we want to call it restarting, but getting back together an airport advisory committee to assist the commission in being able to make some of these decisions. And that allows the public and some of these people who have more expertise with airplane or aviation operations to give their guidance and direction from the community to the commission. So I'm supportive of that. And in speaking with Commissioner Gibbon, it appears that Helms and Associates is able, under the contract that we have with them, to be able to provide the guidance as well, and to do so in a way that is consistent with FAA regulations. And they'll essentially guide us in what we do. I, I think there's a lot of big, there's a lot of big opportunities out at the airport. There's a lot of big challenges. One of them is on the agenda today with regard to hangar space. In researching this a little bit, it appears that there is a dire need for hangar space in the greater Sioux Falls area. I think in our airport operations plan, there is a idea or a concept that airplane hangars will be built, new airplane hangars will be built in the out-years. I think it's 2027, if I'm not mistaken. But I think, I think there's a great demand for it. We may be missing out on opportunities to capture some of that sooner rather than later. And I think being able to put this committee together will help us, give us the kind of ideas we need to work with Helms and Associates to put together our airport operations plan, maybe in a way. You know, maybe we may have to rejigger around some of the years and dates on which we want to do these things, given the fact that there's more intense demand for hangar operations now. So I'm supportive of it, and if you make your motion, Commissioner Gibbon, I'll second it.
If I may, Commissioner Aaron, so your points are well made, but I think it was the action of the board to acquire that property that this is not a new thing, that there's been hangar need out there, and that is why the board, I think, took an unprecedented action with the taxpayers' funds to acquire this property when it wasn't, you know, funded through the FAA initially, with the hope and desire that, and somewhat reassurance that it would qualify. So the need has been identified for many, many years out there. And it was action that they acquired the additional land to actually give this opportunity. The Hibernson property had been identified for many years and, and tried to negotiate for Jim, Commissioner Schmidt would know a lot longer than I would, but for many, many years. And with his passing, it gave the opportunity to acquire that property, and thankfully we did. So we can acquire or advance the mission at the airport, so thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Well, I would agree with Commissioner Gibbon's. There was, at one time, there was a very active group that represented the airport, and they had hangers, hangers, and they were some of the individuals that had businesses out there. I think Gail remembers all of that. We had individuals that were there. And unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond their control, a death of a one individual who was the main leader, this kind of disintegrated and went away. And I still think Commissioner Gibbon has encapsulated very well a committee that certainly is comprehensive and looks at the long-range future of the airport. And I understand that it's under evaluation, but I think that can be incorporated. I like the idea because everybody has a stakeholder. Commissioner Poppins is correct. For a long time, Lincoln County has supported that airport, but it has tremendous potential, which hasn't even begun to be, I mean, realized yet. I think the economics of that thing are, as Sioux Falls continues to grow. I would agree with Commissioner Aaron's that there is a very definite need for hangar space. If you do some research, you will find that Sioux Falls is practically full. Madison is also, I think, approaching being full, and so is Laverne. And those are the kind of the key spots around that at least some, some of the pilots that I've talked to have indicated. So Commissioner Gibbon, I'm certainly going to be vote in favor of that, should you make the motion, but you've already got a second. So I endorse and thank you for your service on that because I think it's going to be a good committee.
I would, Commissioner Gibbon, let's define what the maximum number should be on that. If you get a committee that is too large, I would say nine. I would prefer seven, but if nine is your motion, I would support that as well, so.
All right. I guess I also move that we create this committee and that, obviously, use Helms and Associates as our consultants and that we advertise or whatever is appropriate for the representatives, that we need to help us in the direction that we should go now and in the future.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Attorney Golden, you're up next.
Thank you. I've been contacted by the Airport Association, who I believe is represented by Mr. Taylor. And they would like to start discussing with the commission about airport hangers, leases, and the operation out there. And so this matters on the agenda for discussion. I believe Mr. Taylor may wish to address the commission.
Okay. Good morning. Can you just state your name and address?
You bet. Good morning. My name is John Taylor. My address is 4820 East 57th Street, Sioux Falls, 57108. Our discussion on this agenda was pretty timely with respect to the previous agenda item. About 14, 15 months ago, two gentlemen that are here, Brian Bros and Brian Neves, approached the commission on renegotiating a lease for Comet Harrelson's hangar after Comet died. The timing and sequence of that negotiation coincided- The timing and sequence of that negotiation coincided with the commission's action to limit leases to one year. We ended up transferring the remaining time period that was on Comet's lease to their LLC, and that's worked so far. Commissioner Poppins, you had asked at that time that we get organized and try to alleviate the onesie-twosie aspect of different hangar owners approaching the commission for different leases. So we did that. Gil Wiltz, Brian Bros, Brian Neves and Darren Chester spearheaded an effort to put together all the hangar owners. And they formed a hangar owners association called the Y14 Hangar Owners Association. Approximately 80 to 85% of hangar owners are members of that organization. The goal is to speak with one voice. That said, their pilots are all type A personalities, and that can be a little challenging sometimes. But so far, we're doing a pretty good job. The goal of our appearance here today, backing up a little bit, I would ask with respect to the previous agenda item, that a representative of that hangar owner association be appointed to the commission. I think that would provide some valuable advice in terms, there are a mix of general aviation, business aviation, home builders, all kinds of different flavors that would be, could be beneficial for the commission's study and examination of the airport going forward. The reason we're here today, Commissioner Poppins, Commissioner Aaronson, you'd asked for kind of a market study of rents in the area. That was one of the things we had had brought up was, you know, leases have ebbed and flowed in the Lincoln County Airport. Up until about 2018, leases were capped at 20 cents a foot, or really even 15 cents a foot and didn't include an escalator. Realtor Craig Hagan of NAI Sioux Falls did a lot of groundwork, a lot of legwork and figured out what the market rents, if you want to call it, are for the surrounding areas. I've got some handouts to provide the commission if I can approach.
Second, third page have.
Thank you.
Be considered kind of.
Thank you.
Sale of comparable airports.
Go to the third page. Ground lease rents for Brookings, Watertown, Huron, Spearfish, Mitchell, Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Faribault, the Wisconsin Average, and then tried to find the substantive terms of those leases for purposes of leases going forward. Basically, what we're trying to do is we want to standardize the lease, get a standard lease for those that are about to expire. There are a couple hangar owners that are well outside of that surface protection zone that are running on a one, one year or maybe, maybe half less than a year left on their lease. What we'd like to do is do the legwork for the commission, draft the, what would then be a standard lease that would include rent escalation provisions in order to bring Lincoln County up to other comparable airports. But in exchange, we would ask for longer lease terms. Under the FAA's order references in here, 5190 dot six B, which is the Airport Sponsor Compliance Manual, it recommends in that document that sponsors grant leases that are 30 to 35 years in initial term. So Craig Hagan went out and looked at what other airports have for terms. They range from 20 to 40 years, depending on location and, and different things. Sioux Falls is 30 years with a 10-year. Traditionally, the airport here at T has been five-year terms, four, five-year terms with a couple of renewals on the back end. We would ask a minimum of 20 years for capital amortization purposes on, on new leases. So when someone goes out and acquires a hangar or builds one, they can capitalize or amortize their capital investment over a period of years and also be able to secure some financing. The last year, there've been, I've been involved in two hangar sales that financiers wouldn't underwrite because of the lack of remaining term. And I think they had seven or eight years remaining on the lease terms, which wasn't satisfactory. And that affected the purchase price considerably. Longer lease rates allow for higher property values, higher property taxes. So that's kind of what we're asking, asking for a thumbs up from the commission to get started drafting, work with Mr. Golden to draft a lease that's satisfactory to his office and, and God willing, to the commission's viewpoint as well.
John, thanks for doing this work. Thanks for doing the work, John. Appreciate it. I would concur with you. When I started looking into this hangar issue with regard to constructing hangers, I found the same thing. The FAA encourages long-term leases in the 30 to 35-year category. And I think I would be supportive of that as a ground lease term. The rates, you know, I, there's probably a little wiggle room right there, maybe a little room for negotiation. But I agree with you on all counts with regard to why we need the long-term leases. And just so people know, at least from my perspective, the only reason for short, doing these one-year, you know, extensions is so we could get our sea legs, figure out what's going on and come up with a longer-term game plan. And I think that's what you're presenting to us today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaronson.
Thank you. John, is it your intent then to just work with our state's attorney's office in coming up with a new contract going forward?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know that we need to take any action on that right now.
No, I just, Madam Chair, I have one quick comment.
Oh, sure.
John, again, thank you for getting back to us. And there's no disagreement on trying to solidify a long-term agreement, given that we have just changed architectural, or engineering firms for that. We're in the process of trying to look at the long-term plan, which may include new, you know, terminal for access for users and stuff and out there. So I think most of the intention of just doing a one-year renewals was so that we had the ability as, get our sea legs. And we're still getting a little confirmation as to what our long-term plan out there. We have 20 acres that we're going to expand into hangers and other uses possibly out there. And that hasn't been solidified yet. So I, you know, I would encourage the board to, yes, work diligently to try to make these airport hangar operators and users understand that we have a commitment out there, but we can't have it infringe on what are, what would be in the best interest of the taxpayers for the whole property.
Understood.
So, but.
John, if you know, when do those, you know, what's the gator closest to the canoe right here? How soon do some of those leases come up for renewal that you know of?
The one at top of mind is one by, one held by a partnership called THP Partners. That expires at the end of May. And that would go, if we could reach a resolution on that and use that as a test bed, I think that would go a long way to ameliorating some of the other association members' concerns.
Sure.
I think that would quiet some things down because that would set, at least, give the appearance of things being set in motion. And that particular hangar, I think, is one or two hangers north of Comet Harrelson's, up against the west, the boundary line of the airport, up against the west, west border there. It's well outside the zone. It's not those old green ones right up next to the taxi lane, pretty far away. That would be the first one.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure. Go ahead.
And I'm not trying to be, don't get too excited, hangar owners, but I got to ask a question. When I look at 20 years from now, we're talking about 2041. My goodness, to look into the future that far seems to me to be a, a long time. Maybe I don't understand why we have to have a 20-year lease on something. Because in, in those 20 years, there's going to be one major amount of changes that are going to take place out there. And I have concerns about the fact that if we have these leases and we're all leased up and there are opportunities that we don't even know about or haven't even thought about yet, that may negate some of that stuff. So I'm just wondering why we got to go out two decades on, on a lease. Now, Commissioner Aaronson, you said you understood, so help enlighten me on why, or John, help enlighten me why 20 years is the magic number. I know that other states have this, but I'm still asking the question. I can't foresee, I, you know, what's wrong with a decade? When I think of that, 10 years is a long time. And we're talking double that. So help me understand.
Commissioner Schmidt, that's a valid question. The, the primary reason would be for amortization purposes. So a new owner can buy an existing hangar, finance it if they so choose, and be able to secure underwriting in order to get that purchase made. That's, that's the first piece of that. With a shorter lease term, you end up with a depressed property value with, because of the inability to underwrite it. Average buyer couldn't come in if they wanted to finance it, wouldn't be able to secure financing for that long of a term. So in essence, that's kind of a reverse taking. You're artificially pushing down property values. Other leases that I've seen, particularly up at Sioux Falls, have a clause in it that if the airport's plan or the FAA's mandate or the FAA's plan for the particular area field so requires demolishing and removing that hangar, that's reserved in there. And there's a mechanism to value that process. Presumably, that would be part of a improvement plan or a grant process. And there'd be some, some accommodations made for that. So it's a valid concern and why, you know, some of these hangers are pretty old. But age isn't necessarily descriptive of condition. These are very well maintained, majority of them are very well maintained, particularly the further west you get from the runway, because they're newer. I mean, Harrelson's was built when I was 11. I remember playing around in it. And Bros and Neves have it now, and it's in great shape. So, and there's been construction to the north of there that, and also to the west. So those, those structures are in good shape. I wouldn't, age wouldn't be a worry. And if the, as a airport sponsor, if Lincoln County says, we want to put a crosswind runway in, or we want to redo these taxiways that require additional setback of the structures, that's within your power as your port sponsor as part of the airport improvement grant process. You can mandate those things, as long as it's in a long-range plan and, you know, not arbitrary and capricious, so.
Well, John, thank, that's, I, you know, you have articulated very well the fact that if there is a change from the FAA standpoint, that there is an escape clause on there. I commend our, I think our hangers out there are all in pretty decent shape, the ones I've seen or been around. The other part is we blew the crosswind one, right? We had that. But commissioners long ago blew that opportunity. So we, if that would have been there, we would have had, my goodness, we'd had an instrument of approach, we would have had so many more things than we could have ever thought of. But thank you for that explanation. Very well.
Thank you, John.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Go ahead.
John, you touched on the one, one of the factors. The second thing, I haven't had a chance to research yet, is I definitely understand the new construction needing to have long enough time. Help me understand what some of these other municipalities do and entities do with their, once they, those initial contracts run out? What is the action at that point? That's the one thing that we're kind of mostly addressing here today, so.
So if I understand your question, you're, you're thinking about the 40-year-old hangar that sells and, and may not be in as good of a condition.
Yeah, I was trying to do a 30-year lease on top of our, you know, the previous 40-year lease gets to be a little excessive, so.
Some municipalities handle that, that initial hangar that, you know, let's say it was built in the 80s. At the end of its lease term, those go on a five or a 10-year extension. Sioux Falls in particular has some hangers that were built, I want to say in the mid 80s, that are approaching their functional life but are in still very good condition. That airport's been writing new leases on those. I'm thinking two in particular, a new lease was written on, most recent one, seven years ago, if memory serves, and that was a full 30-year lease. But I would, I would encourage the commission that, that maybe take those on a case-by-case basis. The new term, new lease would include a provision that granting leases entirely discretionary at the airport sponsor, and that's, that's perfectly acceptable to the FAA. But there has to be some provision there to allow the existing owner to either remove the structure or if it's a, in essence, a condemnation, the county has to be able to reimburse the owner for some of that, for some of that. If we're talking about a 40-year structure, it's got economic life of 40 or 50 years. At the end of that, the county says, hey, that's got to come down. Well, some of that's on the risk of the builder from the original lease. But also, if we're talking about a mid, midlife transfer, then that document needs to reflect, okay, what do we do at the end of the economic life?
You bring up good points that we have to get resolved. I would recommend that we have Mr. Golden and his leisure time, that he has access to work through this with you and, and maybe give a recommendation on how to best advance the airport concerning. And again, it's mostly about these existing leases that have run out, and we have to try to get them up with a, a term that's rational for them as well as us, so.
I've authored leases for four different airports in two states, all, all separate, and have included some of the same concerns and addressed in the same language that we've talked about this morning.
Thank you. It sounds like the consensus of the board is pretty much the same to work with Mr. Golden on coming up with a new contract and looking at those things. So thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Golden?
Good morning.
Thank you. If it pleased the board, Tom Wolman, state's attorney, here this morning to make an ask for additional staff through the end of this calendar year and moving forward. Has been said that to be acquainted with misery contributes to one's appreciation of happiness. And unfortunately, I don't have a lot of happiness to report in my office right now. A bottom-up review would indicate that my, my support staff, if they were in my position, the first thing they would do would be to come down here and ask this board for more assistance. If anyone's been following Commissioner Aaronson's courthouse committee, you will know that our numbers have grown significantly over the past 10 years and over the last 20 years. Annually, we've been tracking about an 8% growth to our caseload. And this year, we're up as much as 40 to 60 to 80% in some of the areas of our criminal prosecutions. Nationwide, crime is up. The rates continue to grow this year. The South Dakota Attorney General released his crime report, I believe, either yesterday or late last week, which indicated more violent crime, more homicides, and we have been no exception. We had a number of homicides this past year. One of those cases is still open and is a capital case. So through COVID, the Second Circuit numbers, and in particular, our numbers, continued to rise while other counties did not. And so we've just continued to track upward with our crime numbers. Of course, this board has authorized Sheriff Swenson additional road deputies. And low and behold, I've got more work in my office, likely as a direct result of some of that. Currently, well, as of yesterday, we had filed 161 felony files in my office. Last year, to date, or at that date, we'd filed 103. So it's approximately a 64% increase. So we're continuing to track upward there. Misdemeanors are up significantly as well. So we need help. I need an additional legal assistant and additional paralegal. I continue to get emails from my paralegals after hours, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, because they're having to take work home with them. So as I mentioned at the outset, not a lot of happiness. We work on a daily grind with a significant caseload and on subject matter that is trying. We, we don't talk about that a lot, but the things that, that we work on are incredibly stressful and they're incredibly important to our community and to the victims that we serve and the public that we serve. The projected numbers that we have through the end of the year, again, are tracking upward. And at the end of the day, we need help. So my ask is for a legal assistant position. The cost of that would be a range from, for the entire position, salary and, and benefits would be from 56.9 to 61.84. And then for an additional paralegal. And then for an additional paralegal position at 65, 65.4 to 74.46. With total amounts on the low end from 122, on the low end to 131 on the high end for that, at the, at the step five. There's just a, a couple slides on some of the things we talked about at the courthouse committee meeting, just with the responsibilities at the office. The responsibilities continue to grow. We talked about the mental health board and the additional responsibilities that we've had over the past few years as the cases, as the, we've seen that uptick in our behavioral. And as this board knows, we're, we're down here every day. Are down here every Tuesday, working with you and department heads as well. So we've grown significantly. When I started in 2000, we had the, myself, Scott Abdallah, myself, and three staff positions. The county population was 24 or 5. Now we're looking at about 65, I believe, potential projected.
65.
65. You know, initially, when I came down here, we'd just switched over from the First Circuit to the Second Circuit. And we've had just tremendous growth since then. Again, numbers continue to grow up, whoops, go up in terms of what we're working on. The drug crimes, et cetera, continue to soar along with DWI crimes as well. Not sure where IT, the man behind the curtain there. So again, the felony caseload was just reviewed, just over 600, filed just under 500, two and a half attorneys, full-time felony attorneys working on those cases. And 209 reviewed per attorney, 199 per attorney. And those are above the, sort of the recommended daily allowance, if you will, as established by the DOJ.
What is that recommended number?
The 150 to 180. So, and of course, with the complexity of, of the cases, that, that's something that, that needs to be weighted in as well. And of course, violent felonies are going to take more, more of our attention than non-violent cases.
Tom, how many attorneys do you have in your office right now?
We've got five.
Including yourself?
Six of us.
And then how many support staff?
Seven of us. Or no, was it? Let's get that mixed up. So there's five, six, six attorneys, nine staff.
Is there, is there one opening right now? Or does that six include that vacancy?
I've got two openings right now.
And is that included in your six? Or you, are you approved for eight?
I'm, I'm sorry, for the support staff?
No, for attorneys.
We'd be at five right now.
Okay. And you have two more, two openings?
Yes, correct. For an attorney and for a paralegal position.
Okay. So to get you to six attorneys, you'd need to fill that opening?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So again, projected for 2021, near 800. Projected filings, 640 to 660. And again, increase of up to 80%. Misdemeanors are, are tracking with similar numbers. And the recommended amount there for an attorney to handle would be 300 to 400 misdemeanor cases. And we're at that, somewhere in between the mid three, well, upper 300s for that. So again, as we've heard from presiding Judge Howman, they, they want to add more judge time here to Lincoln County. And the, the net result from that would be, my office would be completely overtaxed if we had to make appearances in multiple courtrooms, which we're already doing. We're just going in too many different directions right now and need this support staff. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, Tom. But while we're on the subject, I know, being an attorney here in the Second Circuit, Judge Howman did send out an email to the members of the Second Circuit. And so what you're saying is right in line with what our judicial system is saying. Judge Howman wrote, "As many of you are aware, over the last number of years, the case volume in Lincoln County has been steadily increasing. Over the past 10 years, Lincoln County has moved from the ninth-largest county in South Dakota by case volume in 2011 to the third-largest in 2019. Over the past decade, the case volume has grown and on average, 7% to 8% a year. In 2020, however, Lincoln County was the only county in the state whose case volume grew during the pandemic. Every other county in the state saw a decline in case filings, including Minnehaha County. Over the past fiscal year, case filings in Lincoln County have increased tremendously. Based on fiscal year 21 projections, the increase in filings will be closer to 19%." And then Judge Howman goes on to say, "As a result, the court system is going to be instituting a number of requirements in Lincoln County." And I won't go through each of those. But when it comes to criminal cases in particular, the court is requiring with any motion that a brief, and I mean, it, this does create additional work for your office. But I think it's in an attempt to kind of manage that caseload that's going into court.
Absolutely.
So the court went on to say that they would continue to take additional steps to provide resources to Lincoln County. But in a nutshell, what she's saying lines up exactly with what you're saying today.
Yeah. And I believe that both Carl and, and Judge Howman, you know, reviewed the numbers where they were as COVID hit and made, made a decision that they needed to remain open, so to speak, for business through the pandemic and through last year. Whereas other circuits, other counties shut down their jury trials. They shut down their criminal jury trials. And in the Second Circuit, there's just no way we would survive. We would be completely backloaded with cases that, that would just endlessly go on. And unless you stay on top of that caseload, it will languish and justice delayed, as justice denied. We've got to keep the cases moving, and that's the mandate coming down from up top. And I fully appreciate why they're doing that. Because you can't sit back and say, well, our numbers are up. We'll deal with it when we get to it. No, our numbers are up. We need to deal with it as our numbers go up. So to the, the point about the, our numbers through COVID, I think without question, again, putting road deputies out or more road deputies out has led to an increase in our volume, so.
Right now, fair to say that you're not staffed to man any more courtrooms?
That's, yes, I, I would say that. That's the case. As, as a practicing attorney yourself, Mr. Aaron's, fully appreciate what it means to be in court for an afternoon. The emails don't stop, the phone doesn't stop ringing, and the paperwork doesn't go away. And that remains true for those paralegals that come with us and provide, provide that support assistance as well.
Thank you.
Tom, what would, I have a couple of questions. What would you gauge the stress level of your staff right now?
Very high.
Very high.
Very high, yes.
I
We, we, we lost a 20-year veteran recently. And I, I think, I can, I think that she said this publicly. I don't think I'm breaking her confidence by reporting that the day-to-day dealing with burglaries, rapes, homicides, child sexual assaults took a significant toll on her. And she, she moved on and back over into our, into the civil practice. You know, law enforcement's retirement track for our deputy sheriffs, our, our police officers, is, is a much shorter retirement track than anyone else's because of what they have to deal with. I'm not putting us on that same level, but we're dealing with, you know, the same, the same crimes.
Highly emotional issues
Yeah, absolutely.
That have to affect, I don't care how you cut it. You can put all the stuff aside. If any of us had to deal with some of the stuff that they have to deal with on a basis, it affects you. Tom, you are State's Attorney. And this is what I, I want the public to know. Most State's Attorneys handle three, four, five cases. How many cases are you handling right now yourself?
In that upper 150-plus. And I would imagine that I was right in there in the 190s to 200 through last year as well.
That's in addition to being the State's Attorney?
Right, right, yeah. In the, in the bigger offices and the bigger jurisdictions, most, most lead prosecutors are department administrators, and they handle maybe 20. I think Mark Vargo probably handles probably 20 to, anywhere from 20 to 50 cases.
Okay. How much push are you getting from the court? I mean, gentle pushing to clear up the backlog. And the reason I say this is, my daughter had need to have, to be in front of Judge Rasmussen. And she applied last January, and the first open date that she had was last Thursday, which tells me a big thing about the amount of time of the backlog that you're appreciating. If you add this additional person, add two people that you have in addition to what you're asking for, I mean, they're already open. So, you know, we can assume that if you fill those, that would help. But given the growth potential, how, how much, how long would that cut down? And how would that alleviate that staff situation and bring us more up to speed? Because we've got two courtrooms and we're, we're short. Is that part of the reason why we have this backlog? I mean, yes, it is. But would another courtroom alleviate all of that?
It, it would certainly help. I know that Judge Rasmussen is plugging things in on, on days when she's normally scheduled just to be
Triple booking.
Yeah, working on opinions and working on the, the various legal matters that she needs some office time to work on. So we're scheduling things at 8:00, 8:30 frequently and filling in days that we would normally not have available to us for this backlog that needs to be addressed. So Fridays, Thursday mornings, whenever she can plug things into her calendar, she's making her best efforts to do so. And, and as Judge Howman has mentioned, she wants to assign an additional judge down here, so, to, to deal with that, to deal with the volume.
Which means your staff is with the new judge?
Right.
So if you have three judges down here, now you've got to cover three judges.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for our State's Attorney?
Tom, you have, you're authorized right now for six attorneys?
Right.
And you're down one, correct? So you have five currently on staff?
Correct.
And as of right now, those five are set. There's no indication that there's more leaving, correct? Or is one of them actually on the way out?
I, I, I hope not.
No, no, I know. I'm not trying to raise any alarm bells here. Right. So we're one person down for the attorney. And then how many support staff are authorized right now?
Let's see, five, six. We would be at nine support staff.
Okay, and that's without today's request?
Correct.
So you're currently authorized nine. And how many people fill those nine slots? All nine are filled?
No, there's an open, open position right now. One of the paralegal positions is currently open.
Okay. So eight of the nine are filled. And you're asking us to create a, two new positions?
Correct.
Legal assistant, legal paralegal. That'll take you up to 11 support staff.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, pardon me?
Yes, go ahead.
Tom, I was not here for the architectural meeting, but I don't know if you were for sure or not. But did the, the judge indicate that within five years we'll have a caseload similar or exceeding Pennington County? Was that, I had heard that was something in there.
I, I know that we're knocking on the door and that our numbers are becoming comparable to Pennington County. Actually, I think the filings per capita are, are tracking higher than Pennington County. Does that sound right, Commissioner Aaron's?
I think the statistic that was provided is that our filings will equal Pennington County's filings in five years. Now, originally, Judge Howman came to the commission just a month ago, or to the courthouse improvement committee meeting. And she thought, based on projections back then, that number would be met. And I don't want to misquote her, but I think it was, it was a long-term number, somewhere 10 to 15 years. But based upon current filings, in five years, Lincoln County's filings will equal Pennington County's filings.
And I believe part of, part of it was, I think, if I'm recalling correctly, is that Pennington County has 10 courtrooms, is that right, Commissioner Aaron's?
They have 10 courtrooms and 12 judges.
Thank you for
Or 12 judges and 10 courtrooms, one of the two she put out, yeah.
I think it was 12 courtrooms, 10 judges. But my question leads then to, what would your staff look like if we had that? If you could crystal ball it or similar?
With 12 judges?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not a laughing matter because we've got to prepare for this in potentially five years or less.
Right. And our, our projected growth for the entire office was as many as 30 attorneys, 30 staff and attorney, and 30 staff and attorneys combined within 10 years? Within 10 years was our projected.
So we don't get to sit back and take a breath, do we?
No, no.
Thank you.
And again, this is a humble ask. And I know I'm in front of this board annually with my budget. And, and I think that we've tracked with almost a zero-line budget for, for the last 19 years that I've been here, are presenting on this. So I'm here humbly asking for this. One compliment that I've received over 20 years is that I've, I feel like I've done a pretty good job. And others have noticed that I've stayed on top of sort of that management of staff and, and the caseload. I feel like we're riding pretty wild right now and holding on just for barrel, just for, for dear life at this point as we continue to manage. So again, appreciate your consideration of, of these two new positions. And I'll leave it at that.
Tom, just to put the growth in perspective, last night, I was at the South Dakota Ag Family's Beef Crawl. And I had dinner with one of the Minnehaha County Commissioners. And I said, "How many attorneys do you guys have on staff in Minnehaha County?" And he said, "72." That's between the State's Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, and the Public Advocate's Office. They have 72 attorneys in Minnehaha County. And we have five.
Right.
And we, we're knocking on the door of 65,000 to 70,000 people. Maybe that puts things in perspective.
Absolutely, got to stay on top of it.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Aaron's.
Madam Chair, I don't know. I'm, I want to, I'm going to put Tom's, give him some solace. I want to move to accept his request for two additional staff people.
So the way I want to do it is first for the legal assistant at a range of 56.9 to 61.84. Believe that's the request. So is that your motion?
Yes, my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
And then as to the paralegal request for an additional paralegal with a salary range of 65,400 to 70,446, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good luck finding people now.
Yeah.
Good luck, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Next up, Deputy State's Attorney Golden? Do you handle in this one?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'd received, well, the architect that we've been working with for the courthouse committee has reached the end of the contract we had with him. And so in order to continue over the committee and looking at the courthouse needs and the space needs for the administration building, we need to go ahead and enter into another contract. And so he's proposing that we, and I believe he's available by phone if we need him. But what he's asking for is to go on to an hourly rate, not to exceed $12,000 in order to assist the courthouse committee pending this period of time. So it really depends on what he's asked to do between now and the end of the courthouse committee as to what it would cost the county. But he did set an upper limit of the $12,000 not to exceed. So that's the contract that he had sent over, proposed, or the terms to continue working with us.
And I didn't see that contract in our share file.
There was.
It got handed out just this morning.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't have a, oh, I do have a copy. Scratch that.
I apologize, I didn't receive it until 6:30 last night, so.
And this is really just to assist the advisory committee?
It is to go ahead and, he's, yes, it is to assist the advisory committee and to address the space needs for the administration side of the building, and any projections or studies, or possibilities of coming up with plans and other things for locations or for design, depending what we want to ask him to do, or the commission would ask him to do, as far as renderings or anything else that might be, the committee might come up with to present to the commission as options.
What's the hourly rate?
That is not in there. And so, we may want to get him on the phone and just ask him. Is he?
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. What is the hourly rate that you're asking to be capped at $12,000?
We've got a, a rate sheet, so I can send that over. It would depend on who exactly is working with me. So, I can send over a rate sheet and, and note the, the type of personnel that would be working on this.
Thank you. I think right now I'm going to ask for a motion to table this until we have a more defined contract in front of us. That'd be my ask, if there's a motion to that effect.
I'll offer that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. That item will be tabled until we see a contract.
We'll go on, we've talked a lot about courthouse and courtroom space needs already. Commissioner Aaron's, you're going to tee up item 13.
Thank you. Last week, we held our fourth courthouse improvement committee meeting. And at that meeting, the presiding judge and two of the other sitting judges in the circuit asked to attend, two of them are already members. Presiding judge gave us a presentation on case filings, and she amended her projections to state that case filings are on the rise, and they're on the rise to such a great extent that what's happening now is they have to move civil trials up to Minnehaha County from here in Lincoln County. So, the practical effect of that is, number one, scheduling, which pushes cases further out to a certain extent, depending upon availability of courtrooms in Minnehaha County. And the other practical effect of that is, if that civil trial happens to be a jury trial, it will force Lincoln County residents to have to drive up to Minnehaha County. Not unusual, not unheard of around this state for that to happen in certain circumstances. But the way that it was laid out for us is that this is going to become more of a going concern, and it will essentially become standard operating procedure until the following occurs down here in Lincoln County. And that is, a request was made by the judges. One of the judges asked for, at a minimum, one courtroom to be created, and another judge asked for two courtrooms to be created. Right now, what's currently occurring is the judges, if they need extra space, will use the multipurpose room. I guess they'll just set up tables, and they'll put the parties to the court case in front of them. Not ideal, I guess I would call that suboptimal probably. And right now, Jake, I guess given his proximity to the multipurpose room maybe, is the one who is somewhat coordinating the, that courtroom space. So, again, not ideal, suboptimal, to have the county IT director coordinating courtroom space. But it's a fix that they've tried to make work for right now. And then, of course, we have another judge who is a member of the committee who asked for a second courtroom to be created as well. Just so people know, right now in this courthouse, we have one large courtroom where jury trials are held. We have a second courtroom which jury trials can be held in. There's concerns with that courtroom now, that juries cannot deliberate inside of there because there's inadequate insulation in the walls, and so jury deliberations can be overheard. So, perhaps some type of construction defect that was not considered when that courtroom was originally built. We have a third courtroom, which is very small, and I would say, I've, I've tried cases in all of these courtrooms. And in the third courtroom, very small, it's only intended for short matters, short causes, things that are less than a half hour to be considered. And then, there's also some television screens, and they call it the ITV system is set up inside there. What the judges are asking for now, is I've heard a request from them, and they've started using words like "emergency request." And so, I think we're at the point now, obviously, we've been leaning forward in the foxhole and attempting to put together a long-term plan that will remedy courtroom space issues for decades into the future. Myself, Commissioner Schmidt have been sitting on that committee, and we've made good progress. And we're about to turn the corner to make even more progress. And then, going back to the last agenda item, our architects are part and parcel of that committee. They're running out of funds, so we will need to re-up them in order to continue our work, and hopefully, they'll come back at us with a more defined contract. However, that leads us back to the current request from the judiciary, and, you know, county commissions have statutory obligation to provide courtroom space for the judiciary. Just so people know, just so the public knows, the third branch of government does not pay for courtrooms in South Dakota. It pays for some of the equipment that goes in the courtrooms, but each county commission and the residents of the county are responsible for supplying that courtroom space. And I think the long and short of it is, and Commissioner Schmidt can weigh in here if he wants to, but they're out of space. Now, there were a couple of concerns that were articulated to us when we said, "Okay, you're out of space. Where do you want to have your space at?" And there were, of course, concerns articulated about security and proximity to the clerk of court's office, and so, the judges would like to have courtroom space in the courthouse. They would not prefer to go off-site, meaning across the street. I know that previously, historically, there's been some other venues considered, basement of the bank, just across the street from the courthouse here. And the way we left the meeting is, we said, "Look, before we make any of the, we understand your concerns, we're hearing your concerns, but we're not just going to, you know, open the checkbook, I guess, right now and just make irrational decisions. We're going to take a look at all the options." And so, we've got to figure out, and the reason I put this on the committee's agenda, is to get a, a flavor, take the temperature of this commission, try to figure out what they're open to. The courthouse improvement committee decided at the last meeting, we will figure out what all of the options are available, as well as take additional direction from this commission to figure out what our options are. And we did develop several courses of action at the meeting informally, and those courses of action are, number one, vacate off, or use underutilized space here in the courthouse, i.e. multipurpose room or other rooms, and permanently convert them into courtroom space that will serve as a bridge until perhaps this commission or the voters would authorize more courtrooms to be built sometime in the future. So, that's kind of the overarching umbrella issue here is, how do we get from where we are today to the point in time where hopefully this commission or voters would consider authorizing more courtroom space? Now, realistically speaking, that could take us up to three years. So, we have to figure out, where do we find space for our people for the next three years? And we have to also take into consideration that the court filings, most likely, based upon our population growth projections, are only going to increase. They're, they're not going to go down, that's for certain. So, going back to the courses of action, number one is, use underutilized space here in the courthouse, i.e. multipurpose room, or this commission chambers, or other offices that may not look like a courtroom today, but could be remodeled or reconfigured into a courtroom. For example, one of the other options that was brought up was, could you take the planning and zoning office and the equalization director's office, and could you remodel that into a more permanent, I'll use the word "professional" in air quotes, more traditional-looking courtroom space? Of course, there's costs associated with all of that. Another option brought up by one of the members was, you could put the judges across the street in the conference room space under the bank. Another option that was brought up is, you could acquire additional office space here in Canton. Another option that was brought up was, we could acquire additional office space up in the north part of the county, where there's an abundance of office-type space, and then staff from this building would vacate this building and temporarily occupy that space while the judges occupy their space. So, it's musical chairs to a certain extent. But there is one undeniable fact is, we're running out of space in this building. And the question is now, what do we do for the next few years to bridge the gap? And so, that's what I'm bringing to this commission for consideration today.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Commissioner Schmidt, go ahead.
Follow up on what Commissioner Aaron's has said. Everything he said was true. I think that it was an eye-opening experience for members of the committee to realize just how crowded our current office spaces are for existing staff, let alone the court systems. So, you, you boil down to, what are your options, and Commissioner Aaron's has certainly are looking, articulated those. One of the key things that are going to sit as a decision, which will be, what happens to the old courthouse? What is going to be the future of that? Will the taxpayers look at that and want to remodel that to a facility that can accommodate maybe in another courtroom, not of significant size, but enough so it has more usability? And will spend the money for the court service workers that are there and build something off-site, or build something next to the courthouse? That is going to be the issue because, to me, the use of that, whether it's historic or whatever, can be a very emotional situation for some. And I think that's going to have to be brought out and offered to the public, just what they believe would be the best investment of tax dollars for the future. We did explore and talk about the bowling alley to the west here, and is that a viable option to talk about, to purchase? I think John used, you uncovered that, that was a little more money than what we, about $280,000 or something like that. The other thing that we don't talk about much is where we're going to have parking, because as we continue to grow, I, we're going to probably have to have a shuttle service because of the limited number of parking spots that are around here, and the distance that some people are going to have to traverse to get to a court system. So, these are, these are very comprehensive things. And the one thing that I remember, as you will, Commissioner Aaron's, we were told to plan out 20 years. We should look to the crystal ball for 20 years to see where we'll be. Well, in 20 years, my gosh, we will be, we'll be with Pennington County, if not surpass Pennington County. So, when you talk about how many courtrooms we need, Commissioner Poppins, I think the original one was seven, but I'm, I'm just guessing that that's going to be shy. We're going to be well onto nine. So, we got an immediate situation to try to address the court system, to satisfy them. And as you heard, this is kind of a perfect storm. As you increase the court system, you get more court activity going on, you have more court activity on, you're asking your state's attorney to supply that activity. So, it just feeds itself. But our immediate need is to find courtroom space. I think Commissioner Aaron has articulated that. But our future is what lies in front of us, and that's going to be, I think, the, the committee itself is going to be challenged to come up with some recommendations as to what they see as the best course of action for us to take.
Thank you. And I know, I, I know that our presiding judge will be discussing, you know, their needs and what they want with our Supreme Court justices, and what they can support in comparison, you know, what they want versus what they need. And I think that will be going forward as well. So, hopefully, we can have some, some ideas and definite things that will work for, for the, excuse me, for the unified judicial system on what will meet their needs, taking the cost to the county into consideration, if that's appropriate. So, that will go on, head and move on to item 14. Julia?
Good morning. Just one item for you this morning, and that is to promote Cindy Ostabye from records clerk to deputy register of deeds in the register of deeds office at 2304, effective the 12th of April.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibbon. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Golden, was there any requests for executive session today?
No, there's not.
Okay. If not, I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion.
Who was the, who was the motion?
Commissioner Aaron's was the first motion, Gibbon was the second.
Thank you.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.